Town moderator Bob Hiss, welcome to night two of our 2021 annual town meeting. I've been advised by the town clerk that we have reached a quorum. We have over 190 members, so I declare the meeting open for business. I was advised in advance by a request for a motion before I proceed to the consent agenda by Mr. Brian Walsh. Mr. Walsh, do you have, if you would raise your hand and we can be recognized? I see your hand, would you can be recognized, Mr. Walsh?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Let me fix my phone because I can't. Can you speak again?
This moderator is Brian Walsh, can you hear me?
I can now, thank you.
Okay, so Brian Walsh, town meeting member for precinct eight and chair of the fire station building committee. Mr. Moderator, I would, I move that consideration of Article 38 be postponed until 7:30 PM on Thursday, May 6, 2021.
Very good, if there's a second to Mr. Walsh's, Walsh's motion to move to a time certain, would you put, say so in the, I see it seconded by Mr. Zulus, thank you. Mr. Walsh, would you like to elaborate, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, we, we want to make sure that we can address and fully inform the town meeting members. And we'll have a couple of experts that will be very, very helpful in arranging their time to a date and time certain. Makes it certain that we'll be able to have them.
Very good. This motion just requires a majority vote. Would anyone like to speak to this motion to move Article 38 to Thursday night, 7:30 PM? If so, please signify by clicking the raise hand button or hit star nine on your phone. Yes, I see a few people, I'll recognize Ms. Carvalho, you're recognized ma'am.
Yes, I'm so moved.
That was already done, all we need is any wish, one wish to discuss this motion for any reason?
Nope.
Okay, Mr. Gilmore, do you wish to discuss? Do you unmute, there you go. Mr. Gilmore?
No.
You don't wish to discuss anything, okay. Ms. King, I see your hand is raised, do you wish to discuss this motion to move? If you can unmute? Ms. King, I see your hand raised one more time if you'd like to speak on this motion to move Article 38, there you go.
That was, that was a typographical error.
Ah, okay. Seeing no more hands, can we, we'll call for the vote, can we put up the polling question, please? All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes, all opposed vote no, all abstaining, please vote abstain. Can we unmute the phones? On the phone, all in favor of the motion to, of the, the article, the, all in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Very good, I think we can close the poll. And the motion carries 88% yes, 8% no, 4% abstained. By the way, that's 185 yes, 17 no, and nine abstaining votes. So with that, thank you, Mr. Walsh, we'll proceed to the reading of the consent agenda. Let me just get to a couple detailed points that were brought to my attention. This, this past evening, just again, reminder on the phones, star six to mute or unmute and star nine to raise your hand. And if you can remember to hit raise, star nine again to lower your hand. And a general request for everyone tonight, when you're done with your question, with your speaking, if you could remember to lower your hand, that would, that would help. Let's see, there was a longtime town meeting member who I neglected to recognize last night who passed away. So Mrs. Virginia F. Wells served as a town meeting member for 45 years. And you may know, listening at home, that she was the beloved mother, mother of select board member Richard Wells. So like to thank Mrs. Wells for her many years of service. Also, there were some questions from some long-serving town meeting members about why they may have been omitted from our honor roll. Because we have so many members that have served so long, I'd ask the clerk if she could pick people on their anniversary ending in five. So for example, we had some people that had been with us 40 years, 43 years, but they weren't exactly 40 or exactly 45. So rather than have a very long list of everybody that had served over that many years, we just are doing it on the anniversaries ending in five. So that was the explanation. So I know there's a member at home, in two more years, you will be recognized, sir. I think those are my housekeeping items. I do see two hands raised before I get started, why don't we recognize those? I see Mr. Carey, Mr. Carey, you're recognized. You can unmute? There you go. Mr. Carey, do you wish to speak? Mr. Carey, we can't hear you. Okay, why don't we mute Mr. Carey, I guess he's having some microphone trouble. We'll go to Mr. Fay, Mr. Fay, you're recognized. I think I have a, maybe pause for a minute, I think I need to speak to the town clerk for a second. Well, it could be quite a night, your moderator has made a dreadful error. Apparently, the death of Virginia Wells has been greatly exaggerated by me. So instead of announcing that, I would just like to thank her, she's no longer a town meeting member apparently, but served for 45 years. So I wish her continued good health and Mrs. Wells, if you're out there, I think I owe you something. So, and I think you may even be on the meeting here tonight with us. So my apologies, I misunderstood an email that came through and entirely my fault. So thank you for that. Now, we'll go back to Mr. Fay, hopefully Mr. Fay is alive and well, and I haven't mistaken him. Mr. Fay, you're recognized. I see you, Mr. Fay, can you unmute? Now you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I, I have concerns that last night's meeting, which went dreadfully late. In the, when one's in the high school, you can see people drift away, but you still have a sense of how many people are in the room. And you might have a sense of if you have a valid vote or not, from a, from a quorum standpoint. Although there may be computers that are still on, it's impossible to know if there are in fact people behind those computers when it's 11:15 at night. So I raised the question as to whether we had a vote of, that was a valid vote last night. So I'd like to ask how many votes, I don't need a roll call, but how many votes were in fact cast last night?
Let me inquire of the town clerk. And we'll get that question answered for you.
Thank you. Oh.
Yes? So a member, Ms. Agostino, has raised a point of order, I think it may be more of a question, but. Ms. Agostino, you're recognized for your point of order, while we're looking this answer up?
For future reference, the town clerk, whether it's at town hall or whether we're online, constantly monitors the attendance. So she would notify the town moderator, should we not have a quorum, and then we would not have voted. It'll be interesting to see how many were left at that hour, but for future reference, if we need information on, you know, just numbers. The town clerk is constantly monitoring the attendance, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I appreciate that explanation. In a virtual meeting, it's very different because a computer could be turned on and you don't know. And I, it raises a question, Mr. Moderator, because you in fact asked, are there people still left on the phone? Which raised a question in my mind, did we in fact have people still behind the computers? So although I understand that, you raised out my mind, Mr. Moderator, with that, I'll, I'll be off, thank you.
Yep, we'll get the count. The reason I do that is when callers dial in on the user interface that I see here, they come in with their phone number. And then I think, as you heard at the beginning of the meeting, the town clerk asked them to identify themselves. We then change over to their names, and they're no longer differentiate, I can no longer differentiate whether they're computer users or phone users in my user interface. So that's why I asked one of our Zoom administrators, because she can see as an admin, which I am not, who's on the phone and who's on a computing device of some sort. So that's why I asked that periodically. And Madam Clerk, do you have an answer for us? Would you like to come onto the mic and just answer the question directly, if you have it?
So at 11:16, we had 222 participants, voters.
I think he also wanted to note the vote count, do we have that, or can we get that?
So I have the percentages in front of me. 166 yes, 46 no, 6 abstained, and we had four calling that, from the sound of it, all four said yes.
Thank you, Mr. Fay, for your question. I've, I can now, I can see the vote count, and if it would help, I could list out the vote counts if I can remember each time. In addition to the percentages, if that would help the audience, it's all in my user interface. Okay. With that, for those of you that may have joined, we did pass a motion to defer Article 38 to a date and time certain. And that's going to be this coming Thursday, May 6, at 7:30 PM, that was passed by majority vote. So at this point, we'll proceed to the consent agenda. So if we could put up the consent agenda for the audience. I'll remind the audience how the consent agenda functions. So what I'll do is, one, I've included in this the articles that I've researched that are typically non-contentious. So I include among those the following things. They include articles that we pass by majority vote only, so I exclude the two-thirds vote articles. But you'll notice last night, the stabilization fund was excluded, zoning articles are excluded because they're two-thirds. Second, I look at those that are passed by, by very large majorities. So if you happen to look at your annual report, and you go into some of the pages in the center. For example, I can look at the annual town meeting in, let's take Article 13. Article 13 was passed by a voice vote of 95%. So when I see an article that is passed with such overwhelming support, has fewer no questions, has no presentation by the submitting board or a sit, or a town meeting member. I say that looks like a good candidate to include in the consent agenda. And the reason I do so is the exact purpose we observed last night. It's, it's clear when we do our prep coming into town meeting, which articles are of high interest to the members and the citizens, and which typically are not. And so what I try to do is preserve your time, which is valuable, for the articles that I'm fairly sure you think in advance are going to be important. And then try to minimize the time on those things that town meeting typically answers, again, with little debate, no presentation by overwhelming majorities. So the items that I have listed here in the consent agenda fit those criteria. Now, how does this work? I explain this to our new town meeting members on our prep call on Sunday night. But just for the whole audience, I'll briefly read each row you see in the consent agenda, starting one through the end. And then I will look to the, my participant panel, and if I see five hands raised. That, those five people are saying they would like to strike that item from the consent agenda. They don't have to justify why, they can just do it. Now, I do hope they're doing so because they have questions that are unanswered, or they want to, they want to debate the topic or something. And I'm trusting the members, it is not frivolous, and the members have gone along with this for the last couple of years while we've been doing it. And I appreciate their getting used to this new technique. It's widely adopted across the Commonwealth, there's probably 100 towns that use consent agendas. Many of them conduct their entire budget by a consent agenda, and they get their town meetings done in one night. But this is Milton, we have a long tradition of discussion, the content is up to you. So again, I'll read an item, if I see five raised hands, I'll just list out the names, and that item will be stricken. And then we will then address that item in the normal course of business. So with that, Article 1, here report of town officers submitted by the select board, recommended the town take affirmative action on Article 1 is printed in the warrant. Do I see any hands to strike Article 1? I see Mr. Mulligan. Any other hands? Nope, I see no other hands, okay, Article 1 will remain in the consent agenda. By the way, I should state, at the conclusion of this, I'll recap what's in and what's out. And then I'll, we'll put up the poll and look for a two-thirds vote to pass the consent agenda. Onto Article 2, authorized treasurer to collect taxes submitted by the select board, recommended the town take affirmative action, as printed on page 20. Anyone wish to strike Article 2, please raise your hand, again, star nine on the phone, or click your hand button in the user interface. I see no hands for Article 2. Article 3, authorized treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreement submitted by the select board, recommend the town take affirmative action on Article 3, as printed on page 20. Anyone wishing to strike Article 3? I see no hands on Article 3. Article 6, audit appropriations submitted by the select board, recommended that the town take affirmative action on Article 6, is printed on page 22. I see one hand for Article 6 by Mr. McCurdy. I see two, Mr. Mulligan, three, Ms. Rosemarin, I see three hands. I see four hands, Ms. Davis, I see many hands, okay? We will strike Article 6. Article 7, union wage set aside appropriations submitted by the select board, recommend the town take affirmative action on Article 7, is printed in the warrant, on page 23. I see Article 7, I see one, Ms. Friedman-Hanna. Any other hands? And this Hannah up, and Ms. Hannah dropped hers, but I'll count it, Mr. Ebon. I only see two hands. Okay, then that article is accepted in the consent agenda. Article 8, employee benefits appropriation submitted by the select board, recommend the town take affirmative action, is printed on page 23. I see many hands, Mr. Matthews, Fundling, Chinman, Harrington, Padera, Casta Thousands, okay, we'll strike employee benefits. Next, Article 9, unemployment benefits appropriation submitted by the select board, recommended that the town take affirmative action on Article 9, is printed in the warrant, page 25. I see Ms. Harrington, Hardy, Mr. Lazar, Levec, Kelly, yep, I see five hands, so we'll strike Article 9. Article 10, Chapter 13, position classifications and wage increases submitted by the personnel board, recommend the town take affirmative action, is printed on page 25. I see Lazar, Levec, Stone, Higgins, Christiansen, yep, that counted as Article 10, is stricken. Article 11, public safety appropriations submitted by the select board, recommended the town take affirmative action on Article 11, as printed in the warrant, on page 33. I see Stone, Martin, King, Agostino, Connor, Mullen, yep, we have, we'll strike Article 11. Article 12, general government appropriations submitted by the select board, recommend the town take affirmative action on Article 12, is printed in the warrant, on page 34. I see O'Connor, Mullen, and Martin. And Christiansen and Mulligan, there are five, okay? I see Article 13, boards and committee appropriations submitted by the select board, recommend the town take affirmative action, as printed on page 37. I see O'Connor and Mullen. Yep. I think they weren't clearing their hands. Just a moment, folks, my Zoom admin said some folks were leaving, we couldn't tell whether you were leaving your hands up, or whether you had raised them and lowered them. So Mr. Zoom admin, how far back does that go? So Article 12? All right, just to be clear, I'm going to re, take a vote on Article 12. Pardon me? Okay, tell you what I'll do, I'll slow down a little bit, and I'll give people a chance to clear all the hands before I start. So Article 9, unemployment benefits appropriation submitted by the select board, recommend the town take affirmative action on page 25. I see one hand up, Mr. Mullen. And Mr. Mullen has lowered his hands, okay, then I will take that as an affirmative on unemployment benefits appropriation. Zoom admin, were we okay on 10, 11, and 12? Do them again, okay, the Zoom admin says no, there was some confusion on those, all right? I'll go back and do Article 10, this is, Chapter 13, position classifications and wage increases submitted by the personnel board. Recommend the town take affirmative action in Article 10, as printed in the warrant on page 25. Now I see members Christiansen and Mulligan. Are there any others on Article 10? Those are the only two, okay, Article 10 is included, thank you to whoever raised that in the Q and A, I appreciate your, your observation. Article 11, public safety appropriations submitted by the select board, recommend the town take affirmative action on Article 11, as printed on page 33. Now I see five hands, Agostino, Martin, Mullen, Cosseal, Stone, O'Connor, many more, okay? Article 11 is stricken from the consent agenda. Article 12, general government appropriations submitted by the select board, recommend the town take affirmative action, as printed on page 34 in your warrant. I see one, Ms. Martin, Mullen, Mulligan, Kelly, and Christiansen. So Article 13 is stricken from the warrant, sorry, the consent agenda. Article 14, and the hands, we can clear all the hands? Just so I can be clear, just everybody's, oh, thank you very much. Article 14, public works appropriation submitted by the select board, recommend the town take affirmative action on 14, as printed on page 38. Now I see Mullen, McCurdy, Rosemarin, Gordon, and Ebon. Okay, so Article 14 is stricken. Article 15, water enterprise and fund appropriations submitted by the select board, recommended the town take affirmative action, as printed on page 40. I see Rosemarin, Finnegan, and Gilmore. And White. And Christiansen. Okay, Article 15 is stricken, if the hands can go down. There we go. Article 16, sewer enterprise fund submitted by the select board, recommend the town take affirmative action on Article 16, as printed on page 41. I see Finnegan, Kelly, Gilmore, Neely, White. One, two, three, four, five, okay? Article 16 is stricken. Article 17, stormwater enterprise fund appropriations submitted by the select board, recommended the town take affirmative action on Article 17, as printed in the warrant on page 42. I see Finnegan, Gordon, Gilmore. I only see three, I see four, Shay, and five, Rhines, I believe. Okay, Article 17 is stricken. Article 22, Board of Health appropriations submitted by the Board of Health, recommend the town take affirmative action, Article 22, is printed in the warrant on page 46. I see McCurdy, Rosemarin. Rhines, White, O'Halloran, there was five, okay, we'll strike Article 22. Article 23, Public Library Appropriations, Board of Library Trustees, recommend the Board take affirmative action, as printed on page 47. I see White, Mulligan, Rosemarin, King, Malcheck, Hart, okay, we'll strike 23. I'm expecting rigorous debate on these items, ladies and gentlemen, given all this interest in debating the items. Article 24, Cemetery Appropriations, Board of Cemetery Trustees, recommend the town take affirmative action on Article 24, as printed on page 47. See Mr. Mullen. Any others on 24, Ms. Agostino? Those are the two, so 24 is in the consent agenda. Article 25, Park Department Appropriations submitted by the Board of Commissioners, recommend the town take affirmative action on 25, as printed on page 48. I see no hands. Article 48 remains in consent agenda. Article 27, Blue Hills Regional Technical School Appropriations submitted by the Select Board, recommend the town take affirmative action on 27, as printed on page 51. I see no hands. Article 27 remains. Article 28, Consolidated Facilities Appropriations submitted by the Select Board, recommend the town take affirmative action on 28, as printed on page 51. I see no hands, 28 remains. Article 29, interest in maturing debt appropriations submitted by the Select Board, recommend the town take affirmative action on Article 29, as printed on page 52. I see no hands, Article 29 remains. Article 30, Stabilization Fund Appropriations submitted by the Select Board, recommend the town take affirmative action on, as printed on page 53. I see one hands, Mr. McCurdy. I see no other hands, so Article 30 remains in the consent agenda. Article 31, Other Post-Employment Benefit Trust Appropriations submitted by the Select Board, recommend the town take affirmative action, as printed on page 53. I see no hands. 31 remains. Article 32, Reserve Fund Appropriations submitted by the Select Board, recommend the town take affirmative action on Article 32, as printed on page 54. I see no hands. 32 remains in consent agenda. Article 33, revolving fund appropriations submitted by the Select Board, recommend the town take affirmative action as, on Article 33, as printed on page 54. I see one hand, Mr. Mullen. I see no other hands. Article 33 remains. Article 34, Affordable Housing- Article Thirty-three Remains. Article Thirty-four Affordable Housing Trust Appropriations Submitted by the Select Board Recommend the Town Take Affirmative Action is printed on page fifty-six. I see one hand, Mr. Mullen. And Mr. Callahan. Mr. Cahane. Ms. Davis. Agostino. Article Thirty-four Is Removed. On Article Thirty-five Peg Access and Cable Related Fund Appropriations Submitted by the Select Board Recommend the Town Take Affirmative Action on Thirty-five as printed on page fifty-seven. I see no hands. So Thirty-five Remains. So that's all the items in the consent agenda. Let me go back and recap. Here are the ones that I have remaining in the consent agenda on which we'll take a two-thirds vote. So by the way, I see there's a hand raised. We try to do this without debate, but it sounds like Ms. Fagan, do you have a, no, you no longer have a question. Okay. So we try to do this without debate because the whole purpose of the consent agenda is just to save the debate for the actual articles rather than debate whether to have the article in the consent agenda. So thank you for for that. A recap, the following are remaining in the consent agenda. Articles One, Two, Three, Seven, Nine, Ten, Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Twenty-seven, Twenty-eight, Twenty-nine, Thirty, Thirty-one, Thirty-two, Thirty-three, Thirty-five. Madam Clerk, can you confirm? Madam Clerk confirms that that is the same number she has. So with that, what we're now going to do is take a vote on the consent agenda. It requires a two-thirds vote. If we could put up the polling question. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All attaining, please vote abstain. We could unmute phones. On the phones, all in favor of the motion for the body, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Wait a few seconds. I think we can close the poll. So the motion carries with two hundred and thirty yes votes at a hundred percent and one no vote at zero percent and zero abstentions. So thank you very much. So if you'll give me a moment, I just need to update my articles so that I know what I'm now going to discuss. If I could just have a second. Almost done. All right, thank you very much. So ladies and gentlemen, with that, we will proceed to Article Four found on page twenty in your warrant. Article Four Recommend the Town Vote to Appropriate the Sum of two point nine million twenty-five thousand to fund the capital projects listed below. Sidewalk Tractor Hundred and eighty-five, three-ton articulating fifty thousand, roadway construction a million, waste oil burner thirty thousand, upgrade window pulley forty thousand, paving concrete two hundred thousand, rooftop unit sixty thousand, gym floor forty thousand, auditorium lighting two forty-five, renovation to one sixty, generator forty thousand, paving and walkway thirty-five thousand, paving improvements hundred and fifty thousand, lower drive construction one hundred thousand, courts and parking lot two fifty, police software replacement three hundred and forty thousand, total recommended bonded capital at two point nine million twenty-five thousand, total recommended capital items two point nine million twenty-five thousand, and unless I say, I see a an objection to waiving the rest of the text in the Q and A, I'll waive the reading of the rest of the text since you've seen the meat of the article. This, let me put my this thing's back up. This is a two-thirds. This is a two-thirds article. Does anyone wish to speak to the article? I recommend, I see, rather recognized, Ms. Deborah Milbauer. Ms. Milbauer, you're recognized.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, great. I am going to read something because it will be faster that way. Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Deborah Milbauer. Winthrop Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. I rise to ask two questions and to request a friendly amendment to Article Four. In in Article Four on page twenty-one of the warrant under bonded capital items under parks, it says lower guile reconstruction. The cost is listed at a hundred thousand dollars. Can you guys hear me? It says my internet connection is unstable.
You're loud and clear, ma'am.
Okay, great. Um, my questions are these. Question one, would the Parks Committee itemize the hundred thousand dollars they are asking for in order to list exactly what the money is for? Question number two. According to the town assessors debate, the parcel that contains the middle and lower fields at the high school is not owned by Parks and Rec, but the school department. Can you clarify this? As many of us are aware, the lower guiled fields sit immediately adjacent to the Pine Tree Brook Conservation Land. As in a butter, I have concerns regarding the potential impacts from redevelopment of the lower guile fields on the natural resources associated with Pine Tree Brook. Currently, it would seem that the activities on the field and the associated infrastructure, so the drainage system, for example, are having a negative impact on the adjacent natural areas. I am requesting a friendly amendment to remove the hundred thousand dollar item in order to give the community more time to understand this project and the impact it will have on the wetlands. This friendly amendment would remove a hundred thousand dollars, which would change the subtotal recommended bonded capital items to two million eight twenty-five and changing the total recommended capital items to two million eight twenty-five. I would also like to request that if this amendment cannot be accommodated, that there is a commitment from Parks and Rec, whatever the project may be, that money be set aside for restoration of the existing wetlands which have been sorely degraded over the last years. Yesterday, I saw cars parked beyond the fields on the conservation property itself outside of the school property next to the bridge. I am also concerned about spending money on the fields, whether for redevelopment or upgrades or whatever it is for, when our budgets are so incredibly strained this year by the pandemic and when other departments are not getting their funding requests that seem more critical than the fields such as teachers for the schools. I think it might be prudent to hold off until our fiscal situation is a bit more stable. Lastly, I wear different hats in town, but today I'm speaking as a neighbor and a volunteer who lives in the Pine Tree Brook Neighborhood Association. Our neighborhood is blessed to have the Pine Tree Brook running through it. It is a treasure and so beautiful, especially on days like yesterday. Our neighborhood held one of the twenty-two cleanups across the town this past Saturday. The cleanup was a fantastic day, and I'm so proud of the work everyone did. But trash and debris, including furniture that we pulled out of the brook and nearby woods, is concerning to me. I'm hoping that Parks and Rec and the community at large can take this opportunity to understand how this project may or may not be in compliance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Law and how it will impact our beautiful brook. In summary, I have two questions and one friendly amendment. The first question, I'd like an itemization of a hundred thousand dollars. The second question, who owns the parcel? And the third friendly amendment is to remove this project from the bonded capital items. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. By the way, Ms. Milbauer, I appreciate your preparation, and she did notify me in advance of her intention to make this amendment. Since this is a friendly amendment, why don't we do the following? We do have a, she did make an amendment, and that takes precedence over questions. This was submitted by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. So I'll call on the Chair of the Select Board. Could you perhaps identify who might be able to answer these questions? Ms. Collins, I see your hand, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Melinda Collins, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. Currently, Richard Wells is the he's the Chair of the Capital Committee. So he might be the first person to speak with, and then Chair of the Parks Commissioners. That was Mr. Ted Carroll. I'm not sure if that's still the case. Thank you.
Mr. Wells, are you with us?
I am, Mr. Moderator, thank you.
Thank you. Where is?
I do. Are we good to go?
Yes, I think, well, there's two things. Yes, if you could perhaps answer the member's question regardless, and then we'll get to the item of whether the you as the Capital Planning Committee wish to accept a friendly.
So I would not accept a friendly, and I'll give it this to you, this predates me being Chair of the Capitol, but includes the past years that I've been on the Capitol Committee. This is a request that has come from the Parks Department now in many parents. Sometime, I think that we could all relate, especially in COVID, the pressure that our parks have taken over the past year and especially what a jewel and gift they are to our town, everything from the West Side, you know, guile up to lower fields. Kelly Shields, Lane Andrews, beautiful scenic tremendous pond, even the Pass of Greensfield only spilt, and they've really become a gift there on this town. So Lower Guile is a park, the Lower Guile Fields are park parcels, not school parcels. If you look in the history, you'll see that we have capital projects. And the town does, actually, the parks actually are the caretakers. The Lower Guile Field, to Ms. Milbauer's point, is heavily beaten and used. They've known for some time that they needed to address this, not only for the environmental runoffs that take place now, but to make this more amenable for the children of our community, in which there are hundreds that play so many different sports. This hundred thousand is for the design and analysis going forward for a new field. The field has immense demand for everything from soccer to field hockey to lacrosse. And they've been very patient awaiting this, and the Capital Improvement Committee, we were going to vote it last year, this is a bond item, not an operational item. Made a unanimous commitment to move this forward, and as I stated earlier in my comments, you know, our parks have really shown in COVID just how vital and precious they are to our communities, so we unanimously endorse this, and I believe if you look at the comments as far as the friendly amendment of the warrant committee on just how all the requests of capital upgrades in totality that we put forward this year, based on the needs of all of our buildings and properties, we strongly would not accept this as a friendly amendment and ask this be included in the initial appropriation, and I hope that answers everything that was asked. Thank you.
And by the way, does Parks Commission, do we have a representative of the Parks Commission on tonight, or Madam Chair of the Select Board, can you answer the question on who, ownership of the lower park?
Hi.
Can you, can you hear me? This is Regina Mally, I think I've been unmuted.
Yes, we can hear you, ma'am.
Hi, Regina Mally, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight, also Chair of the Board of Park Commissioners. So yes, I would echo everything that Richard just added.
Okay.
The itemized.
All right, I'll text you. Mr. Wells, we can still hear you? We can mute Mr. Wells?
The, I don't have the itemized estimate, but it is for engineering work to be done to see what can be done to resalvage that field. That field, we've been pouring money into it each year, and it just doesn't come back to life. There's just a ton of issues with drainage down there, so engineering work needs to be done to see what we can do. We've, like I said, we've been putting money into it year over year, trying to fix it, and it's just beyond repair at this point. And we've received a lot of feedback from the different youth organizations and sports organizations that there's a lot of injuries actually down there, especially with football. They've, they've brought that to us many times, lots of just, you know, sprained ankles and things like that. So we do really need to find a way to fix that, that field. But I don't have the breakdown exactly. But again, it's for engineering work to be done to resolve the drainage issues.
Thank you. Ms. Milbauer joined on, Ms. Milbauer. We can recognize you again, which part of the two questions did you say you missed?
Before she said, I got on when she said it's an engineering, I didn't hear what she said before that. I apologize. You said the students were getting injured, but I didn't hear before that.
I think it was really just echoing what Richard spoke about, that that field is in disrepair. We've tried, we've poured money into it, and we're at the point where we're not going to put any more money into it until we, you know, do this kind of a study, because it seems like we are wasting town funds year over year trying to repair it for use.
Am I, can I say something?
Yes, follow-up question, yes.
Yes, so I'm sorry, so the hundred thousand dollar, what is, what does that entail exactly?
So I don't, I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but that was an amount of money that was recommended by the Capital Improvement Committee. When we brought all of our capital needs to them, the suggestion was to, to do this study first. And engineering unfortunately is, is not inexpensive to do these, this kind of a study. So we did get a couple quotes, and I'm just kind of searching through my, my email, and I don't, I'm not finding it, but they were all, I would say, right around between eighty, eighty to a hundred and twenty-five thousand that were quotes that we received from engineering companies.
And there was a second question from Ms. Milbauer. Use the phrase own the lower park, but I think it may be which town committee has responsibility and authority over that. Did you confirm that, Ms. Mally?
My understanding is that we are responsible for Lower Guile, that Lower Guile is we maintain, I mean, yes, the schools may own the, the middle guile. We maintain all of them. Does that answer your question?
And by we, you being Parks and Rec?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, by the way, the process for a friendly amendment is we there's two things, we consult the submitting body, which are the Select Board and the Capital Improvement Committee. Now, the whole committee isn't here. I was alerted by the Chairman of the Select Board, she'd like to speak on what the Select Board thinks of the friendly amendment. After that, we'll go to the warrant committee. So, Mr. Asher, perhaps you could take a vote of your warrant committee. Do you accept the friendly amendment, since the motion on the floor is actually that of the warrant committee? So I'll recognize Ms. Collins of the Select Board, what's the opinion of the Select Board on the friendly amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Ms. Milbauer, for bringing your concerns to this discussion. The Board does feel that the Capital Committee did a good job vetting this project. This is something that we've been aware of for a number of years, and our hope is that the, the issues that Ms. Milbauer raised would also be addressed through this, as Ms. Mally said. Money is spent on the field, and it continues to underperform both as a field, but also on an ecological basis. So we would not accept the friendly amendment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, I have a request. In the Q and A, if you could reserve that for just two things. Saying so. Saying so moved on a motion or seconded and then raising points of order. And points of order mean you have a process question for the moderator. Because I'm, I'm going to be unable to answer your questions and by using the Q and A, you're trying to, you're sort of jumping to the head of the line. So if you have a question like that, I'd like to hear from someone else. We can have a, a content question. If you could raise your hand, we'll, I'll recognize you in the order in which is, was raised. Now, since this is a friendly amendment, it hasn't been accepted yet. So we don't have an active amendment on the floor until we hear from both the submitting boards and their opinion and ultimately the warrant committee. So warrant committee, do you have a, a vote on accepting this as a friendly amendment? Mr. Asher? Excuse me? Ms. Mally, if you could mute, or if we can mute Ms. Mally? And Ms. Milbauer?
Mr. Moderator, this is George Asher, Warrant Committee Chair, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. We are taking the vote as we speak and I believe we are done. Hang on, I'll be back to you in one second with the final vote. The warrant committee by a resounding majority does not assent to this amendment.
Okay, I'll now return to Ms. Milbauer. Since the friendly was unaccepted, do you still wish to proceed, looking for a second on your amendment, Ms. Milbauer? Ms. Milbauer, if you could unmute?
Yes, unmuted. Um. No.
Thank you.
But I do want clarification of a question that's still pending. So we'll finish this and can we go back to the, another, my first question when this is done?
So you have a follow-up, is it either on the itemization or the control of the lower park?
No, itemization.
Itemization. Let me put that perhaps to Mr. Dennehy. Might you be able to see if that is available somewhere?
I could get it offline. I don't need to get it now in the meeting, but I'd like to understand why it's, what's going into the hundred thousand dollars.
Very good. All right. Thank you for that and your flexibility. And once again, for your preparation here. So now we are back to looking at this article as printed in the warrant. I, now will anyone else wish to speak to this article? I see the first hand is Mr. Fahey. Mr. Fahey, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Fahey, Precinct Nine. A question, and I'm not sure if this is Mike Dennehy or if this is someone representing the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. But it looks like the departments throughout the town had requested a total of fourteen million, six ninety-one. And what was written here by the warrant committee and is proposed to town meeting is a value of two million, nine twenty-five. So only twenty percent of what was requested by the departments is what's being proposed for town meeting to approve. Is, is, I guess it tells me that there's eleven million that was not accepted by the Capital Planning Committee. Is this, is it typically such a large number that we are not, that, that we are, that we are declining to recommend to town meeting? It, it just seems like this, eleven million is a big number, but could somebody answer whether we typically year after year have that kind of, of a number of projects that we're not able to recommend?
I can. Mr. Dennehy, do you think you have that answer? I see Ms. Collins, your hand is raised. Would you like to be recognized, Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes. That is correct. This is a very conservative budget this year for capital. It's unusual, but given the circumstances, it, it was felt that it was warranted. And as I said, the Capital Committee did a lot of vetting of projects and they put forward only those things that could be bonded and were really most necessary at the time. But as I said, this is an unusual circumstance, more conservative than usual.
So, so if I could ask, Ms. Collins, typically we would, if we, we would not have to be so conservative, we would try to approve more for the town departments than, than this, than this amount?
Yes, I can't remember what last year was, but it, it was, it was a very different picture. Not only did we have bonded capital, but, but we also had an unbonded budget as well. And actually, I believe we used some free cash for, for some of those items that were, were one-time things. And this year, as I said yesterday, we used the whole six hundred and eighty-one thousand in free cash, which is really unusual. But it was, it was, it was needed for other things and unfortunately, capital items that we would normally be addressing didn't, didn't get addressed this year. And I certainly hope it's different next year.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I guess it speaks to the, to the many needs we have in the town that we're not able to, we're not able to take care of. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Fahey. I have two more hands up. Ms. Agostino, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diane DiTulio Agostino, Precinct Nine. I just will note, since I have it in front of me, last year's bond for the capital projects was three million, three hundred thousand. So it wasn't that much higher. I have heard from quite a few neighbors from time to time and fellow town meeting Deborah Milbauer should be commended for speaking up regarding this reconstruction. The Pine Tree Brook Neighborhood Association recently had a Brook cleanup date. They did a phenomenal job down there. I can't believe what they pulled out of the brook. But I raised my hand because sometimes when we're looking at capital projects, we forget about the neighborhood. And I would strongly urge, whether it be the representative on the Board of Selectmen or the park representatives or the schools, I would strongly recommend that all three of them work together to hold a neighborhood meeting regarding that area to prevent any concerns that they have because they do have, they're constantly raising these concerns with the property down there. So I totally support the hundred thousand. I'm sure it was well researched. But I commend Ms. Milbauer and all of the residents over Pine Tree Brook. So I hope that a meeting will be held with that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostino. Next, I see Ms. Clark, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jill Clark, Precinct Four. I'm curious if there is a list of roadways that are slated for reconstruction in fiscal year twenty-two under the one million dollars for roadway reconstruction? And if so, where we can find that information?
Mr. Dennehy, do you have that answer for us? Or Ms. Collins, I see your hand is raised.
Oh, it's still raised from before. My apologies. If you go onto the DPW webpage, you can see all of those roads and you might be able to actually access it from the front page where it says current projects, but I do think it's the DPW page that you want to go to and there's a list of all the roads. They did a great job keeping it updated. You're welcome.
Thank you. Last hand, I see Mr. Wells, your hand is up. You still wish to be recognized?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just one final point that I, I want to make on the, on Ms. Milbauer's comments as well as Ms. Agostino's. The parks really did, as I said previously, did a great job with this and I did not think to bring this with me today. But the benefit is that the reason they wanted to go into the study and analysis, they realized that drainage runoff, environmental concerns, the Pine Tree Brook are very critical. If they were just to say come before and ask for sod or new, they, that would not be addressing these things. So they took this as a preemptive step to address the, the issues that affect the neighborhood, the Pine Tree Brook, as well as make that feel better. As I said, I think we need to remember that all of the coaches and parents from our schools, our sports, all that, they're all residents of the town. They're all people who give it their time to try and make life better for our kids. Again, I really do think that they've done a great job with this so far and that when Ms. Milbauer gets a look at this, plenty of other residents, they'll see that the parks really thought of the big picture and just weren't just thinking of just the field on its own. So thank you for that final comment.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. I see no other hands raised, so with that, we'll proceed to a vote. This is a bonding article, so requires a two-thirds vote. We put the poll up, please, and unmute the phones. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes, or if you're on the phone by saying aye. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. So the ayes on the phone?
Aye.
And the noes on the phone? Thank you. We can close the poll. The vote carries at two-thirds with two hundred and four votes at ninety-one percent, seventeen votes no at eight percent and four abstentions at two percent. Thank you for that. The next, we will skip Article Five because we discussed that. We will skip, I'm sorry, we will go to Article Six. Recommended that the town authorize the town audit committee to make recommendations to the Select Board relative to the appointment of a certified public accountant for the purposes of this article and that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading recommended FY twenty-two. I'll just read the last column FY twenty-two, general lot at sixty-three thousand, OPEB valuation ninety-eight hundred, total lot at seventy-two thousand, eight hundred. And that to meet set appropriation, the sum of seventy-two thousand, eight hundred be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Get my participants back? I see Mr. McCurdy, your hand is raised. You're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve McCurdy, Precinct Seven, Town Meeting Member. A question I have is, when was the last time that the audit services were reproached? It seems to me it's been quite a while and we heard last night that there are a number of longstanding issues. And it leaves me to wonder if some of the longstanding issues are longstanding because there's been such a long relationship with the same auditor. And it just strikes me that from time to time, those should be reproached anyway, just to make sure we're getting the best service and the best prices.
Okay, I will put that question to Ms. Collins. Do you know that answer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melinda Collins, Select Board Chair, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. We went out to bid in twenty eighteen and we've just signed to your extension, actually, with Powers and Sullivan.
Thank you. Any follow-up, Mr. McCurdy? Are you all good?
I'm all good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see no other hands raised. And Mr. McCurdy, if you could lower your hand, there you go. With that, we will proceed to the vote. If we can put the poll up, please. All those, and by the way, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. Could you unmute the phones? On the phones, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Thank you. We can close the poll and present results. The motion is passed with a vote of yes, two hundred and sixteen votes at ninety-six percent, no, seven votes at three percent, abstain, three votes at one percent. Article Seven was passed by the Consent Agenda. Article Eight, recommended the town appropriate the amount shown in the tabulation under the heading recommended FY twenty-two employee benefits. Contributory retirement, seven million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, two fifteen. Group insurance, fourteen million, sixty-seven thousand, nine nineteen. Total employee benefits, twenty-one thousand, four ninety-nine, one thirty-four. And that to meet set appropriation, the sum of twenty million, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars be raised from the tax levy and five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars be appropriated from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? I see Mr. Funneling, you're recognized.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I am Jay Funneling. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Three. I'm also a pension actuary who worked with the retirement plan funding for fourteen years. I would like to bring up the same issue I raised last year about the retirement contribution, which is seven point four million dollars this year. Unfortunately, by the time it gets to town meeting, I believe it's too late to change the contribution, so I won't be making an amendment tonight. As I said last year, the annual increase in the pension contribution is a choice that the town committees make. This is continuing a policy that was put in place more than fifteen years ago, when the annual contribution was around three million dollars, less than half of what it is now. At that time, the town thought the retirement plan would be fully funded in twenty seventeen. This six percent increase year over year is a self-inflicted wound on our budget. We always hear about health insurance costs rising, but the retirement contribution is a higher percentage increase than the health insurance. This cost goes up six percent while our town revenue only goes up to an half percent. We all heard last night how tight the budget is. Last night, we debated for hours over four hundred thousand dollars requested by the schools. Well, the pension contribution increased by over four hundred thousand dollars this year. If we had kept this funding level, we could have provided those funds to the schools or for some other purpose in town. Now, I will admit, I am oversimplifying a complex issue. I'm a pension actuary and I take retirement funding very seriously and I am not saying it's an easy choice. But I am saying this is an issue that requires attention. We shouldn't just be contributing on autopilot with a plan that was put in place over fifteen years ago. Before the meeting, I looked at the minutes for the retirement board and the Select Board Finance Committee for the past year. And I did not see any discussion of appropriate pension funding levels. I urge the town administrator, the Select Board and the warrant committee. All of you know better than anyone how tight the budget is. Please, please, soon in the coming year, take a close look at the pension funding plan to see if we can stop deliberately making our budget tighter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funneling. I see two more hands raised. Ms. Carvalho, you're recognized. Nope, Ms. Carvalho dropped her hand. Then Mr. Walker, you're recognized. Mr. Walker, do you wish to speak? There you go.
Thank you. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten. I think Mr. Funneling raises an important point, but I, I think one of the relevant facts that might be helpful is, can someone answer what percentage, how well-funded the retirement program is currently? Is it seventy-five percent funded? Is it fully funded? Can someone answer that question? Thank you.
We will. Ms. Collins, is there someone on the Select Board that can answer this question? Perhaps the town accountant?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We're actually checking with our HR director. So if you'll just give us a moment, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was debating saying this in the last article, but when Ms. Collins said that this line item was warranted, my response is, well, of course it is, it's in the warrant, but that's just town meeting humor. We call this filler in the moderator business.
Your, your moderator humor is appreciated and we're still working on the answer. I just wanted to let you know that we were working on that. Thank you very much.
Tough crowd. Thank you. Folks, if there were any other individuals wishing to speak, I'd recognize them and we could get your question and double up, but I see no others, so we'll pause for Ms. Collins' answer. Mr. Neely, you're, perhaps you can be filler.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Moderator, Rick Neely, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member and former chairman of the Pension Study Funding Committee back in the eighties. My last look at this number was that it was funded at eighty-three percent and that is as a result of a state report that was issued in the past year.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. And then, Ms. Collins, I see you're back with an answer, nodding your head.
Um, hello, Mr. Moderator, and Mr. Neely is right on the money. It's 82.6% as of 2019, and the 2021 actuarial study hasn't been started, so we would like to extend an invitation to Mr. Funling to attend the Retirement Board. That would be really helpful, and we do have consultants working on this, so his contribution would be greatly appreciated, and we'll have Mr. Dennehy reach out and extend that invitation.
Thank you. All set, Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. I see no other hands, so with that, we'll proceed to the vote. If we could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. Opposed, no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. Please remember to click submit. And if we could unmute the phones? On the phones in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? We can mute. Thank you. We can close the poll and the results. I declare a majority vote with 201 voting yes at 87%, 25 voting no at 11%, and four abstaining at 2%. Article 9 was passed by consent. Article 10 was passed by consent. That brings us to Article 11. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading recommended FY22. I'll just give the subtotals. Inspection services, $559,754. Total fire, $5,938,686. Emergency management, $10,935. Police, $7,878,396. Total public safety, $14,387,771. And that to meet said appropriation for lease law enforcement, the sum of $1,400 be transferred from the dog licenses surcharge account received pursuant to Chapter 187 of the Acts of 1981, and that $14,386,371 be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? I see, Mr. Mullin, your hand is raised.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Peter Mullin, Precinct 2. I had some questions with regard to the recommendation. On page 33 in the warrant, under the heading Inspection Services, general expenses, we appropriated $18,000 last year, and the proposed recommended is $652. I wonder if someone can explain that to us. The fire department, we have an overtime line that had $372,000 in it. I'm wondering if that includes the $125,000 that we voted in Article 5, or that 125 is in addition? I have the same question with regard to the police department on page 34. We've got $474,000 with regard to overtime. Does the $130,000 we voted in Article 5, is that added to it, or is that included in there? My final question is with regard to our discussion last night, I believe we were told that the fire department does not use purchase orders with regard to purchases, and I wonder if we can get an explanation as to why.
Okay. All right, I counted four questions there. With that, I'll go to, since this is submitted by the Select Board, Ms. Collins, do you have, can you direct us to the appropriate expert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I may have missed one of Mr. Mullin's questions, so when, if I have, please speak up. So as far as inspectional services, that 18645, much of that last year was for software, and there was a surplus this year in the budget, and so the next year's installment is actually being paid for ahead of time this year in order to take it out of the FY22 budget. So the question of overtime, yes, the amount in Article 5 is then added to this. It's not also included in that line item. I believe there was a question, another question that I missed, but as far as the fire department not using purchase orders, it's taken some years to transition every department into that system, and they're the last ones that are being worked on at the moment.
Ms. Collins, Mr. Mullin's third question was the same overtime on police. Is the $130,000 from 5 in or out of the 474?
It's not in this. It's in addition.
In addition to this? We'll add 5 to this and get the total amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All set, Mr. Mullin?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. I see, Mr. Stone, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Very clearly. Thank you.
Great. Jeff Stone, Precinct 1. I have a comment and a question for Chief King, if he's available, or another representative of the police department. And this is in regard to national calls to defund the police during the past year, and scrutiny of the mission of police in racially diverse communities. I'm not suggesting a reduction to the proposed Milton Police Department budget. The calls for defunding police generally don't mean dissolving police departments, but shifting some portion of their budgets to more mental health professionals, social workers, who can respond to calls without the need for armed force being present. I think this is probably much less of an issue in a town like Milton compared with big cities, and I believe the Milton Police are already working with BID Milton Hospital and formerly, former South Shore Mental Health, which is now called Aspire, and others to divert some of the 911 calls more quickly, like substance use emergencies and mental health crises directly to mental health care. So because of the national attention on police budgets, I wondered if Chief King was available or somebody else to speak to this.
Mr. Dennehy, do we have Chief King on the line?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. Yes, we do. Chief King is on the line this evening.
Chief King, you can unmute. You're recognized.
Thank you, sir. Can you hear me?
Very clearly. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John King, the police chief. You know, just regarding Jeff's question, you know, defund and reallocate, and you know, I spoke briefly about this, I think at last year's Town Meeting, and strangely enough, I just spoke about this Friday night at the temple during the meeting, and kind of right on topic to this and some other stuff. But, you know, it's basically just right on point. It's, you know, defunding, you know, reallocating. It really has different meanings depending upon the community you're in. But, you know, I do not in any way support defunding the police. Again, I guess everybody interprets that differently, but, you know, I absolutely support more funding for mental health programs, substance use programs, social workers, you know, the things Jeff talked about. You know, I've always supported these things even long before current events, and Jeff's pretty accurate on his knowledge of the Milton Police. You know, we have a mental health clinician here in our police department, and, you know, we've partnered with Aspire Health Alliance, and, you know, that's a co-responder, response to actual, you know, mental health crisis at the time they're happening, also does follow-ups regularly, just outreach. We use, you know, a jail diversion program to, you know, get people into treatment rather than jail. We're doing a lot with that. That mental health clinician's paired up one of our, one of our community service officers. So, you know, strong advocate, I agree with additional funding. These groups have struggled for funding for years, and, you know, out of the tragedy of current events, maybe they'll finally get the attention they deserve. So I support that. I don't necessarily support defund the police to move it over here. I think the police are still needed because these calls come into the police at 24 hours a day. These calls oftentimes do involve, you know, violence, unfortunately. And, you know, I don't ever see, although there may be some role for, you know, mental health professionals to do it by themselves, there's always going to be a police role, which means the police need to be trained, the police need to be, you know, competent, and have these partnerships to respond along with the professionals. So I've personally advocated for this funding. I personally spoke at the State House. I've worked with the National Mental Health, the Department of Mental Health, and the reason we have a clinician at zero cost to this town, I think it's because of the advocacy we were doing long before current events. And my fear with defunding the police is if you defund the police, you're going to probably, we're going to make those cuts. Is it going to be the sector carry through the 911 calls, or is it going to be the community service officer? It's probably going to be those extra roles, and if we could cut our community service officer, that's who's going to these follow-ups for every substance abuse in town, every mental health call in town, and we would lose the officer who's doing all those. So I don't see that as helping the situation. I see that as hurting it. I, you know, I think it kind of comes down to common sense. I'll end on this. You know, if these programs are properly funded, I think common sense is that will probably naturally lead to a decrease in some of these police needs anyhow. So that would reduce some service for police inherently. But, you know, I appreciate Jeff's question. He's a professional in the field and a friend of the police, and he's right on point with his comments.
Thank you, Chief King. Next, I see Ms. Tagheas. Ms. Tagheas, you're recognized.
Cheryl Tagheas, Precinct 9. I'd like to direct a question towards the inspectional services portion of this budget. There are a number of projects that were permitted recently and are under construction currently that I expect will generate new revenue for the town. And in looking at the revenue projections, new growth is projected to be lower by 200, nearly $238,000. And I'd like an explanation for why that is. I believe several years ago, there was a new position added to inspectional services due to the volume of permits that were being sought. I think that volume has continued, and I think, I'd like to understand why the projection is gone down. Thank you.
Mr. Denny, can you answer this question?
Certainly, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. If you recall, last year, Bob Bushway and the Board of Assessors increased new growth last year substantially. A lot of that was due to national grid, their revenue sharing, their growth. It was reported after we went to spring annual Town Meeting, and it was, it was up to $969,000. The number you see from last year has an embedded growth figure from one of our utility companies, which happens from time to time. I will say, the Board of Assessors and our chief appraiser started with $600,000 this year and was able to ramp up new growth and the revenue estimates to the number you see in front of you tonight as we work through the budget process, understanding that we were coming out of COVID, and some of the projects that we weren't sure were coming online were. But I want to thank the Board of Assessors and the chief appraiser for their attention to detail. We asked them to revisit those numbers several times, but to answer Ms. Tagheas's question, that number was growth number reported by one of the utility companies.
Have a follow-up, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, please.
In that new growth number, Mr. Dennehy, is the Hendry's Building at 131 Elliott factored into that number?
No, it is not. They revisited it very recently, probably if we are in May now. Mr. Bushway and John Grow, our technical appraiser, went down there again in late March at the request of the Select Board to try to increase the new growth number for this year. But at this time, it is not included in that.
Okay, and then one last request. Given this discussion yesterday at Town Meeting regarding the need for new revenue and potential new revenue, sub-discussion by the Chair of the Warrant Committee about commercial development, as a member of the planning board for the last six years, and have a person who's worked on zoning during that time, I think it's important for people to understand the potential revenue of certain kinds of projects. So if we could have an understanding of what that projected revenue will be for the next fiscal year for a development such as the 131 Elliott Street project, I think it would be helpful to Town Meeting members. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to recognize Ms. Martin. Ms. Martin, you're recognized. If you could unmute. There you go.
My question, Barbara Martin, Precinct 8. My question is with regard to the line item under the heading of inspectional services for salaries and wages. This seems to be a significant increase from the appropriation from FY21 to FY22. Is there an explanation for that?
Ms. Collins, do you have that one?
I will in a moment, but I'd like to answer Ms. Tagheas's question if I could. I don't have an exact figure, but the Finance Committee vetted new growth quite extensively this year, and Hendry's should be generating somewhere between $235,000 to $250,000 in '23.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. And you're working on Ms. Martin's question. Very good. Ms. Collins, you're back?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Some folks have noticed, there may be some feedback from other speakers in your room. That's...
Okay, my apologies. Is that a little better?
Sounds okay to me.
Okay. So our plumbing inspector was out on leave, and so we had to use, you know, an independent contractor to fill in during that time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Ms. Agostino. Ms. Agostino, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diane de Tuleo Agostino, Precinct 9. I, first of all, would just like to mention that today is International Firefighters Day, so I'm sure we all appreciate the many services that we receive from our firefighters. On the second item, the Milton Police Department, on the inner report that we received on page 263, I hope everyone will take time to take a look at some of the incident reports and the number of accidents, car accidents, hit-and-runs. Hit-and-runs was up to 80 hit-and-runs in our town. I'd also like to ask the Chief of Police the following questions, if he could please address them, because over the last night and over the last week, I've heard different answers regarding the personnel change that's going to come about due to the decrease in this budget. So first of all, for the chief, the questions are, I see on page 263 that we now had 175 incidents of identity theft, and this is something that's becoming more and more of a concern in our society. I'm wondering how much of our police officers' detectives' time is now moving from some of their other work into this whole identity theft? I know it's very time-consuming. Another, and I've actually am aware of individuals personally whose information was stolen, and there were several. So if anyone's listening, I didn't realize until I brought the point up, I think it was to the chief, that you should report if you receive a notice from Social Security, that's not from Social Security, from unemployment, that someone applied for unemployment in your name. That means they obtained all your information, and they really did apply for unemployment, and it should be reported. So there's so many new things happening with identity theft, and then elder affairs, there were 48 incidents, and I know, I believe it was during that timeframe that a woman had $10,000 all boxed up, ready to be shipped out of UPS location, the office over in Quincy, and by chance, the box didn't go. It didn't, wasn't released, and so her money was saved. But those... So I know one of the ones that retired was actually not just a patrol officer, they were a higher officer, a higher salary. And just because two people retired doesn't mean that they're not being replaced. In 2017, I believe it was, we voted for an override to fund a traffic officer, and I believe we recently added a parking tickets officer. So I'd like to know specifically which two officers are not going to be out doing that, but those particular jobs? Which jobs are we going to be missing? And then always looking for revenue, is the loss of the traffic ticketing officer, which is helping us with the speeding in town, because the 25 mile an hour speed limit is not doing much of an impact? Does the police chief think that the revenues are going to be impacted by the loss of, if it is indeed the parking ticket officer and the traffic officer?
Thank you. Chief Collins, are you still on the line? Pardon me, Chief King.
No worries. Probably Chief Collins soon. Go no matter time, yeah, identity theft is up the, significantly up. You know, a lot of time is spent on those, and, you know, some are solved, some aren't. You know, they're complicated cases, but, you know, the time involved is basically, you know, you're conducting subpoenas, you know, you're tracking IP addresses, you know, some of those are committed locally, some of them are committed in other states, many of them are committed in other countries. You know, there's a lot of factors into those ID thefts, you know, there's more money to be made than there is, you know, robbing people, breaking into houses and cars. You know, we're not a community of much violent crime, so obviously our numbers are higher in these categories. You know, there's other variables that have probably created a short-time spike, you know. Obviously, when you have these stimulus programs, you know, unemployment benefits usually expedited, which allows for manipulation, which increases some of these, you know, unemployment-specific thefts. Of all the others, you know, there's more people at home, you know, people working from home, people going to school from home, they're online more, which just makes them more susceptible to, you know, computer hacks and things like that. So time, I can't, you know, quantify with a number, but significant amount of time spent by detectives on those cases due to the complexity of them. You know, the jobs cut, you know, we're constantly juggling that based on, you know, who else is out, who's on leave, you know, so forth and so on. We have not cut the credit for community service officers because we feel that program is so valuable. That is something we weigh, and what usually happens is, you know, we'll run short in the regular patrol, and if there's somebody, you know, increases in people out injured or on family medical leave or things like that, that start resulting in huge impacts on overtime, then we reassign personnel. So somebody who's doing traffic and community services today, or somebody in detectives today, you know, on a moment's notice could be reassigned, you know, next Monday. So, you know, as of now, they're cut from the patrol division, meaning patrol in the streets, but, you know, that's subject to change, and I'm constantly changing that based on needs. So I can't say I make this cut and it stays that way for a year. That's just not how I manage. I factor in who else is out and what reasons, and how long they're going to be out. So that's a little bit in flux. And third, you know, your revenue comment, I can only say that generally, you know, the revenue doesn't come to the police, it goes through Town Hall, it goes to the Town General Fund, that probably is more appropriate for somebody like the Treasurer's Office. But the parking enforcement officer, civilian position, they were, you know, were put on, you know, furlough, so to speak, during COVID. Our complaints have decreased significantly during COVID, so obviously there is a loss of revenue from that, but, you know, we're also not paying that individual. But I'd have to, specific numbers, I'd have to defer to Town Hall and the Treasurer Department.
Thank you, Chief King. Ms. Agostino, that answer your questions satisfactorily?
Yes, I'll get the numbers from the Treasurer next week. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ned Corcoran, Precinct Three. I've got a question regarding inspectional services. There are, I do a lot of work in the permitting process here in the town, and there is a fairly significant backlog of projects that are moving through from a special permit, variance application process, building permit approval process. I think simply because there is a sort of a cap on capacity within the inspectional services to handle it. I know, for example, that Walcott Woods, which was approved by zoning a couple of years ago, has 54 new units of construction moving through a process, each of which will pay thousands of dollars in special, in permit fees and review fees. And I'm just wondering whether, how inspectional services budget is set, whether it is simply portion of the total allocation, or whether it's possible to take some of those funds and create and allocate them to fund specific positions to help expedite the review of permits? Because the review of permits is slowing down development, development that will lead to a significant growth in new tax revenue, which would help the town overall. So I guess the question would be, what is the plan? Is there a plan going forward to address the issue of the use of permit fees to expedite the review of permits so that those funds and the tax revenue generated from them could be, could help our budget situation? Thank you.
Understood. Either Ms. Collins or Mr. Dennehy, do you have an answer to that?
Mr. Denny, you can take that.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. You recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Yeah, we've had several conversations. I think most of the people here tonight and people viewing on TV understand that what COVID did to people, the large developments are one thing, the majority of the work that is coming through the Inspection Service Department, daily, weekly, hourly, is homeowners either doing renovations or expansions to their home. Each week, Mr. Prondak comes up to me. Mr. Prondak gives some very conservative permit fee estimations. They are continuing to break records each year, and I want to commend his staff in that office for all the work they're doing. Again, most of the work are the big, small M permits that you see in the windows throughout time. In my experience in Boston, we had what was called a clerk of the works. It was funded through development projects and exclusively worked through that process. And it was, that position was funded by the developer or utility company to get that project through the system a little smoother. I can certainly have a conversation with Mr. Corcoran and Mr. Prondak. I know they've spoken about this before, we have briefly as well, but just know that the Inspection Service Department, as many of you know, the delays sometime in getting permits out are literally handling thousands of permits a month. And again, this year, their estimates have topped last year, which was a record. So again, I do understand the frustration as a homeowner in town when it comes to getting a permit for something like a pool or a deck or anything like that, but understand that something like that would have to be a discussion with the developer as a type of revolving account where it would be funded, that position would be funded exclusively for the execution of that permit and those fees.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes? Mr. Moderator, I do appreciate the work that the Inspection Services does because I deal with them all the time, and they work hard and they are processing. I would appreciate an opportunity to meet with Mr. Dennehy, Mr. Prondak, and others to explore some other solutions that might help expedite the processing of some of these permits and help generate additional revenue for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. I see one last hand, Mr. Johnson. I know it's, you're an elected town meeting member, I know it's atypical for warrant committee members to speak, but you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm speaking, Scott Johnson, is Precinct Nine. I want to circle back to member Martin's question regarding the increase of approximately 8% for salaries and wages, yet on general expenses is a reduction of 97%. So this is interesting, something I missed earlier in the meetings that I'm seeing as I looked at this. First of all, I understand we had a plumber issue where we had to use, I guess, subcontracted plumbing to do the plumbing inspections because of the incapacity of the current inspector. But that was, I believe, for the past, but not for the coming year. So we have an 8% increase. Is that expected to continue? That's the first question. The second question is, why is it that general expenses are down 97, approximately 96, 97%? And why were they up so high in the past if this year they're going to be down that low?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Collins, I think you could explain again, just for the benefit of the audience. Thank you.
I'd be happy to explain that again. So Inspection Services has had a multi-year project that involves software upgrades, and that's why the numbers were so high in general expenses. And instead of having to pay that in FY22, they were able to take care of that in FY21. Thus, you don't see that expense in FY22. And if you can give me a moment, I will answer the other question. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, is Ms. Collins still there?
I'm here.
She's back.
Just another question, too. If this, is this 8% raise totally attributable to the plumbing? And what was, if there were raises to the existing staff, could you tell me the percentage of raise for each existing staff member, please, in this pandemic year?
Okay, well, Mr. Dennehy can speak to contractual raises, but I can first speak to the fact that our plumbing inspector did come back. However, we have a part-time employee who was given additional hours, and some other inspectional services agents took on extra work as well, because there was, as Mr. Corcoran pointed out, something of an explosion in home improvement projects last year, and just to try to keep up, those extra hours were added. And if you'll hold on for one moment, I think Mr. Dennehy will be with you.
Mr. Dennehy, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. Mr. Johnson, yeah, so there's a combination of things going on in that office as we look more specifically and drill down into that budget. It goes along with Mr. Corcoran's comments and my comments earlier about the influx of permits generated in that office this year due to COVID. There's a part-time employee there who was given extended hours, and we have a full-time employee who was given overtime hours to inspect. So it's a combination of the plumbing inspector who is back to work and two of the other inspectors, one full-time and the other part-time. We do anticipate this continuing for the near future. We actually recently announced that we will be accepting in-service permits, appointments for those that make an appointment in the Inspection Services Health Department, Town Clerk or Town Treasurer's Office. We announced that last week, that we'll start taking them Monday, and the numbers you could call. But the idea was to try to speed up some of the smaller permits that come through the office with a face-to-face. Building Commissioner Joe Prondak, again, is maxed out with his staff in there. I believe it's a staff of six, if you include the code enforcement officer. So can certainly dive deeper into the numbers with you if you'd like, but the general statement is that, just with the expansion in the permits that are coming into the office, there was some extra salaries and wages. We do anticipate it working through the next six or eight months, but I don't see this something continuing in '23.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. I see no other hands raised, so we'll proceed to the vote on Article 11. If we could put up the poll. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstained. If we could unmute phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We can mute the phones. And we can close the poll and display the results. The motion carries with a majority. Yes, 212 votes at 96%, no, seven votes at 3%, abstained, two votes at 1%. With that, we'll proceed to Article 12. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading, recommended FY22. General, total accounting, 432, 567. Insurance, general, 1.1 million, 1,571. Law, 352,500. Information technology, 554,668. Town reports, 27,389. Total Select Board, 650,528. Veterans benefits, 125,169. Total Select Board, 3.2 million, 44,392. Board of Assessors, 310,513. Town Clerk, 356,490. Election and registration, 95,494. Treasurer Collector, 430,201. Total, 4,437,90. And that needs that appropriation to sum of $4,283,090 to be raised in the tax levy and $154,000 be appropriated from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Mullen, you're recognized?
Peter Mullen, Precinct Two. I'm looking at page 35 in the warrant, underneath the number six, Select Board. The third line down, I believe that's the salary for the town administrator. It looks like we appropriated $205,000 last year, and what we're recommending this year is $186,000. I think the town administrator's been doing a wonderful job, we're lucky to have him, and I'm wondering why this number is down. I think the town administrator's been doing a wonderful job. We're lucky to have him, and I'm wondering why this number is down.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair of the Select Board, can you answer that question?
We rate with you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our town administrator has the ability to buy vacation, two weeks vacation. And in twenty twenty-one, he did do that. And he has not, will not be doing that in FY twenty-two. And so that's, that's the difference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you're recognized. Mr. Johnson, if you could unmute.
Yes, thank you. Scott Johnson, Precinct Nine. Looking at the increase in the accounting salaries and wages, just curious what the cause of that is.
So you are on page thirty-five, A one, top line.
Yep, it's presently an eighteen percent increase in salaries.
I'll turn that over to, again, the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Our Chief Procurement Officer, Michael Kelly, his position was moved into the Accounting Department.
That's a transfer, then?
Yes.
So there was a reduction, a commensurate reduction in the procurement department?
Yes, Mr. Johnson. I should, sorry, I should direct my answer to Mr. Moderator. Yes, Mr. Moderator, that's correct. He was, his position was moved from the Select Board office.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see no other hands raised, so we will proceed with a vote on Article twelve. We could put up the poll. This will require a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we can close the poll. And the results. The article passes with a majority. Yes, two hundred and sixteen votes at ninety-six percent, no, nine, four percent, and abstained, one vote at zero percent. We will proceed to Article thirteen. Recommended the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading recommended FY twenty-two. Conservation Commission, twenty-five hundred. Council on Aging, three hundred and three thousand, three seventy. Historical Commission, twenty-two forty. Personnel Board, sixty thousand, seven eighteen. Planning Board, ninety thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight. Master Plan Implementation Committee, thirty thousand. Warrant Committee, twelve thousand, forty-six. Total Boards and Committees, five oh one thousand, one forty-two. And the need set appropriation, the sum of five hundred, one thousand, one forty-two be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Mullen, you're recognized.
Peter Mullen, Precinct Two. I'm looking at page thirty-seven in the warrant. Under the heading Council on Aging. In the third line, it seems to be transportation expenses. Last year, we appropriated two thousand dollars. We're recommending this year a zero amount. I'm wondering why that is.
Ms. Collins, I will direct that to you at your leisure. Ms. Collins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The transportation cost is actually within the general expenses line item within the budget. That's its statutory category, and so that's where it's been placed in the budget this year. It's not really known why transportation was broken out before, but it is in the correct place. It just, it is hidden at this point. So thank you for the questions.
Thank you. Ms. Agostino, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diane DeTulio Agostino, Precinct Nine. I only learned today, and that's why I'm raising this question, since the Personnel Board is under this article. Why is it that the Personnel Board doesn't oversee the hiring in the School Department? Is that some Massachusetts law? And if not, where in the budget would it be if it's not under the Personnel Board?
I'm sorry, where would, what be?
Where would the review of new hirees be? Because the Personnel Board does review all new hirees, correct?
We'll have to confirm that. I know, I think, Chapter thirteen, if I recall, of the bylaws specifies this. Let me just check with the Town Council and see if they have access to that in our bylaws. Please stand by. Town Council, are you available to answer that? Or perhaps, Mr. Dennehy, since you have HR, are you available to answer that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Administrator Mike Dennehy. I cannot answer that question.
Okay.
It's my understanding it's a bylaw as well.
I believe it's in the bylaw.
So.
We're checking with, we're checking with Town Council. He's in another room. I will just confirm that he is on this. Thank you. Town Council, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Freytag from the Office of Town Council. Good evening, Town Meeting members. Pursuant to Chapter thirteen of our bylaws, Section two, Subsection B, states the positions under the direction and control of the School Committee in conference with Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight A of the general laws as amended shall not be included unless such inclusion shall be at the specific request of the School Committee. So those positions are not in, under the purview of the Personnel Board unless they've been specifically requested by the School Committee.
Follow-up question, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, please.
Could we please hear from the, because this is definitely news to me, and after all the years I've spent on budgets and warrant committee meetings and everything. Could we please hear from the Personnel Board, just a synopsis of the type of review they do do when they far hiring of personnel?
I'm not sure if we have the Chair of the Personnel Board online tonight. Can, Staff, can you see if Michelle Cardoza is online? Typically not, Ms. Agostino. Unless, Mr. Dennehy, since you sometimes sit in, or you're, or Ms. Eppolito attends those meetings as well, might you have any insight? Mr. Dennehy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. Could you repeat the question one more time for me? Sorry.
Ms. Agostino, could you repeat?
Sure. I just learned today that the Personnel Board does not oversee the hiring of personnel for the School Department, however.
Go ahead, Ms. Agostino.
Sorry about that. Alexa yelling at me. I just learned today that the Personnel Board does not oversee the hiring, employment of school and department employees. Town Council just identified that our bylaw allows the School Committee the jurisdiction over whether or not they want the Personnel Board involved in the personnel hiring. So my outstanding question, which I would appreciate some synopsis of, is the process the Personnel Board goes through when, when a name comes to them of a person being hired anywhere in the town. And has it always, maybe you don't have the answer tonight, but eventually I'd like an answer. Has it always been that the School Department employees do not come under the Personnel Board? That might be an open ending that you don't know, but the general process would be appreciated.
Do you have that answer, Mr. Dennehy?
I think, Mr. Moderator, thank you, Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. Ms. DeTulio Agostino, are you asking what the process is for hiring employees on the town side?
Yes, so the Personnel Board, they have, I'm sure they have a whole checklist of what they go through when a new name is presented to them, including, if I recall from years ago, the, what's it called? The classifications and the steps and everything?
So it, I believe it was two thousand and eighteen, there was a town meeting article presented by the Town Government Study Committee and supported by the Select Board that actually changed the role of the Personnel Board on the hiring on the town side. The Personnel Board is now responsible for drafting the descriptions of new positions in town. Any position on the town side, under my purview, is presented to myself, ATA Director Eppolito and the department head, and the interview process takes place that way. But yeah, if you recall, there was a change, slight change to the Personnel Board's role with respect to the town side process. But I can't answer the school question for you, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That's a good start.
Thank you. We have, I see two more hands. Dr. Christensen, you're recognized.
Cindy Christensen, Precinct Seven. I have a question about the salaries and wages for the Council of Aging. Do we have information on the number of employees those numbers cover, or the total FTE?
I will go back to either Mr. Dennehy or Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. There are four employees here that are covered under the general fund. If you recall, there is a position here that is paid for out of the, out of the friends of the Council on Aging.
Are those four full-time employees?
No, three full-time, one part-time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr. or Dr. Pavlicek, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Glenn Pavlicek, Precinct Ten. Just to answer a prior question, under the Ed Reform Act in the nineties, the, it was delegated by law, by Chapter seventy-one, to the School Committee to authorize new positions. And it was delegated to principals to hire within their schools, superintendents hire within district-wide piece, of, there's district-wide positions. And the School Committee hires the superintendent and one or two other people. So it was, it's a result not of the, our bylaws, but of Chapter seventy-one, the Education Reform Act of the nineties that removed hiring of the schools, of school personnel from Town Personnel Boards and put them with the School Department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no other, okay, Ms. Agostino, there's, since there are no other speakers, since we try not to do this twice. If there are any other speakers, otherwise I'll go to Ms. Agostino and we'll go to the vote. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Yes, as a follow-up to that, I think it's important to make sure that our bylaws have been updated then because it did not sound, from what I heard read to us by Town Council, that we may not have amended our bylaw in keeping with the state bylaws. So make note of that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we'll proceed to the vote on Article thirteen. We put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by saying yes. All opposed, please vote, sorry, not saying yes, please voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we can unmute phones. On the phone, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
Thank you. We can close the poll. And the results. The motion carries by majority, two hundred and seventeen votes at ninety-seven percent, no, four votes at two percent, abstained, three votes at one percent. With that, we will proceed to Article fourteen. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading recommended FY twenty-two. Total, subtotal Public Works, two point three forty-two thousand, seven hundred. Solid waste, two million, eight hundred and forty thousand, ninety-one. Total Public Works, five million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven ninety-one. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of five million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven ninety-one be raised in the tax levy. Now, the total amount appropriated, the maximum sum authorized for salaries and wages is one million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen. Public Works Department is hereby authorized to sell at a private or public sale. With the approval of the Select Board equipment that is no longer needed by the department, it is further authorized to exchange or trade in old equipment for similar materials in the usual course of its operations to provide for replacement items. As any, this was submitted by the Select Board, requires a majority vote. Mr. Mullen, you're recognized.
Peter Mullen, Precinct Two. I'm looking at page thirty-eight in the warrant. With regard to Public Works, the first line, Public Works General. It looks like last year, we appropriated one point nine million for this. The recommendation is that we appropriate one point seven million. I'm wondering what Public Works General is and why it's down two hundred thousand dollars.
Any other questions, Mr. Mullen? Or is that all of them?
That's it.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Collins, you're recognized.
Oh, I thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Berkeley, the DPW Director can handle this question, please.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. So the Public Works General covers general expenses allocated to the engineering and the operational and administrative personnel at Public Works. The reduction is due to the budget shortfall that we were. The reduction is is due to the budget shortfall that we were asked to make up. So in order to submit a balanced budget, Public Works absorbed some of that necessary decrease and it was done in that line.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mullen, any follow-up or you said?
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCurdy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Steve McCurdy, Precinct Seven. Mr. Moderator, a few annual town meetings ago, town meeting approved transfer from the capital stabilization fund to purchase, expedite the purchase of high efficiency streetlights with the proviso that the energy savings from doing so, and it expedited manner would allow the town to replenish the stabiliz, the capital stabilization fund over time. And I'm trying to make sure that that has happened, if anyone can confirm that.
Mr. Berkeley, can you answer that question?
I can't answer that it did happen. For exact figures, I defer that to either the town accountant or treasurer, but the money was returned to the stabilization fund. We did receive an immediate grant also from EverSource, over $200,000 for implementing that project, which was also able to be returned. And our electric bill for the streetlights was significantly reduced to the tune of, you know, an average month of $100,000 down to 20 to 30.
Thank you. Mr. McCurdy, is that satisfactory or do you need treasurer Select Board confirmation?
That's satisfactory. I have another question, which relates to the solid waste budget. The town had, well, a long time ago, had headed in the direction of being a pay-as-you-throw community or a cash-for-trash community. In the ensuing years, we haven't had the revenues from that, from the stickers or barrels keep up with the cost of trash. That has two effects. One is that less is recycled or composted, so there's more to be thrown away. And the other is that as the, as the gap starts to get away from the town, more tax dollars are spent to throw away garbage that could otherwise be used for schools, for police, fire, and public works. And I'm wondering from the board's selectmen if there's any intent to finally revisit that and see what kind of adjustment might be made? Or have we, in fact, abandoned that pursuit of being a trash-for-cash community? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley, can you handle that?
Yes, so I just picked a couple comments, and I'd like to defer that to the town administrator too, given his experience in the industry. So just one note, the price of trash stickers has been consistent at $3 for a very long time. So that price has been fixed through these global changes in the market for solid waste recycling. But the, the implementation of the town trash barrel and trash account, the annual bill, has significantly increased the amount of revenue collected through the pay-as-you-throw program. To give you round numbers, we were collecting around $800,000 annually. With the implementation of the barrel, we went up to about 1.2 million. So that's a $400,000 increase just by implementing that program. But unfortunately, global markets are taking off at a quicker pace than than the revenue can can keep up with. So I would like to defer to the town administrator, though, just to follow up on that.
Mr. Dennehy, can you assist?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and Mike Dennehy Town Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Berkeley. Yeah, so having years of experience in the solid waste industry, I want to commend this, this town meeting and and the residents for their compliance. Again, to Mr. Berkeley's point, we've collected almost 41% more in revenue by going to the trash barrel. Again, it was not a punitive step that was taken, but we identified some residential non-compliance and some driver error that was taking place with the pay-as, pay-as-you-throw sticker program. The compliance is great. We have no complaints from, from the contractors who, from time to time, have to leave that step curbside. But as Mr. Berkeley indicated, the industry changed significantly about three years ago. We're trying to stay ahead of that curve. For those of you that that remember, the town was on a two-day, five-year contract. We were on the same contract as the city of Boston, which was a major problem because we were literally, we were held to the last minute before Boston decided who was going to be the hauling contractors and where their disposal for trash, solid waste, and recycling processing facility would go. So we made a conscious decision, we put together a solid waste advisory committee. We met with Kathy Merz, Kathy Merz from the DEB, who advised us, you know, where our sticker price was comparative to other folks. She actually thought that the town was on a great track. We decided to go away from a five-year contract to a three-year contract so as to not correspond with some of the larger communities that that tend to, just to put them in perspective, but Boston does about 250,000 tons of debris a year. Milton does about 6,000. There has been an uptick since COVID with more people being home. So the long-winded answer is the steps we're taking to try to get mitigate the industry costs have paid dividends to the town without, without being punitive. The $3 sticker weekly is the $156 trash bill now that are mailed to the taxpayer. So we appreciate the compliance and the efforts to everyone to continue to try to recycle more. Hopefully, the markets on the recycle side can come back and we can start reducing that that dollar amount to dispose of. The collection dollars are actually in a better place than the disposal numbers. They're having a tough time getting rid of material. And a lot of the solid waste either goes to a burn plant or gets trained out of state. So that's where the cost is coming from. Again, we're in the second year of a three-year contract. Hopefully, the market corresponds with where we need to be a year from now.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. I see one last request, Mr. Lessing will be our last speaker, we'll go to the vote. Mr. Lessing, you're recognized.
Good evening, and this is Lessing, Precinct Eight, and thank you for your presentation. This is just more of a comment. I've been using a compo, a compost service since February of last year. I mean, I pay for this on my, on my own, but the amount of trash that I put out now every week has greatly, greatly reduced. And so I don't know if there's a way that we can encourage our town to use something like that, because it would really reduce the trash that we put out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll proceed to the vote on Article 14. This requires a majority vote. We can put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And please display, close the poll and display the results. The motion carries with yes, 214 votes at 100%, no, one voted 0%, no abstentions. We will move to Article 15. Recommended the town appropriate 6,638,528 for the Water Enterprise Fund, and that 565,000 be included in appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and to be allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund for funding, and that the sum of 7,203,528 be raised and appropriated as follows. Water enterprise revenue, 7,203,528. Subtotal direct cost, 6,638,528. Indirect cost, 565,000. Total cost, 7,203,528. This was submitted by the Select Board, requires a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? With that, we'll proceed to the vote. And put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion for the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain, if we could unmute. On the phone, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. We can unmute. And close the poll and display the results, please. So the motion carries with yeses 217, sorry, 217 votes at 97%, no, our six votes at 3% and abstentions one at 0%. With that, we'll proceed to Article 16. Recommended that the town appropriate 7,766,453 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund, fund that 615,000 be included in appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for funding, and that 8,381,453 be raised and appropriated as follows. Sewer enterprise revenue, total revenue, 808,381,453. Subtotal direct cost, 7,766,453. Indirect cost, 615,000. Total, 8,381,453. This was submitted by the Select Board, requires a majority vote. Anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Neely, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Richard Neely, Town Member, Precinct Three. And the issue here is that the revenue numbers do not appear to match what these line items total here. You can see the 8,381 seems to be not high enough when you look at the 8,166 along with the 215,000 and the 200,000. So I would ask that the Public Works people take a look at these numbers and correct them. Thank you.
So just to be clear, you're on the top of page 42, you're on the revenue. You sum totaled the 8166, the 215, the 200, and it doesn't put to 8381?
Correct. It looks, it looks like it adds up to 8,581,453. Then it looks like they need to make an adjustment down below in either the indirect cost or some other section to balance out.
Thank you. I'll put that question to the Select Board so they can, Mr. Dennehy, you're there. Can you, you're recognized?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Dennehy Town Administrator, I would like to introduce DPW Chase Berkeley and thank Mr. Neely for this comment. Mr. Berkeley?
Mr. Berkeley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. So this, I would just call it spreadsheet era, they made it through the screening of the final draft of the warrant. So rate user fee revenue should be reduced by $200,000 to 7966453. It's just a calculation error.
Okay, so I think, Mr. Neely, I might entertain a friendly amendment per your question.
I'm happy to move that.
So I'll, let's go, we could put this up on the screen so the audience can see it. Warrant committee clerk, okay? So under, top of page 42, the first item, that 8166453 should be 7966453. Okay, the total remains, everything else remains the same, if I understand the math, Mr. Neely and Mr. Berkeley, correct?
Correct.
So while the warrant committee clerk is just putting that up on the screen so everyone can see it. Mr. Neely, does that look right?
Yes, it does.
Okay, very good. Since this was submitted as a friendly amendment, Select Board, do you support the friendly amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, we do.
Warrant committee, do you accept the friendly amendment?
We're taking the poll, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, George Asher, Chair, Warrant Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. The, the Warrant Committee assents to the change.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak to this article now as amended? I see no other hands. We'll proceed to the poll, requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. And if we could unmute.
Aye.
All in favor of the phone, please signify by saying aye. Thank you.
Aye.
And opposed, no. And we can mute. And close the poll, display results, please. The motion carries with 207 yeses at 97%, five nos at 2% and two abstains at 1%. With that, we'll proceed to Article 18. Pardon me, Article 17, jumped ahead. Article 17, recommended the town appropriate the sum of 970,066 for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, that 86,500 be included in appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and be allocated to Stormwater Enterprise Fund for funding, and that 1,056,566 be raised and appropriated as follows. A stormwater total revenue, 1,056,566. Stormwater enterprise subtotal direct cost, 970,066. Indirect, 86,500. Total, 1,056,566. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, we'll go to the poll. Requires, I'm sorry, we did have one hand. Ms. Wells, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. The question I have really relates to this particular article and the prior two articles. There's an item called indirect costs. And in only one of the write-ups, it says it's for administrative and billing. And I just wanted to know where, who got paid for administrative and billing? Is that something that another department charges this department for? Because we have this indirect cost in each of these articles.
Thank you. Mr. Dennehy, is that you or Mr. Berkeley? Ms. Collins, you might know.
Mr. Moderator, I believe Mr. Berkeley can handle this question.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So yes, the indirect costs are for staff that are outside of the Public Works Department that work on Public Works Department administrative tasks such as payroll and and of the like. So it's charging those salaries from the town treasurer, town accountant's office that are part of the Public Works administrative process.
So are they reflected? I'm sorry, I have a follow-up question.
Yes, please, Ms. Wells.
And I should have identified myself, LOL, Precinct Nine. So are those indirect salaries then reported in those departments already? Or are they extra to the budgets of those departments that we already voted on?
I would ask the town accountant or treasurer to confirm, but I believe that these are charge-offs that are then reversed back to those budgets.
Why don't we just see if we make sure? Madam Collins, can the town accountant confirm Ms. Wells' question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe that's correct, but we do want to double check and and make sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, please, Mr. Wells. Yes, please, Mr. Wells.
Town Administrator, Mike Denny. We will do some further checking, but it's our understanding that it's a chargeback. We know for a fact, so if you look at a DPW worker, there is a percentage of their check, literally their check stub is a percentage of work that is done based on their allocation of work. There'll be a percentage allocated to stormwater, a percentage allocated to water or sewer or just general public works. On the administrative side at Town Hall, it's my belief that that's a chargeback done at the end of the quarter. It's not something that appears in their check, like you'd see with most public works employees were associated with indirect costs.
Oh, it's not, it's not included in salaries and wages under those other depart, under the Treasurer's Department?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, we could, we'll proceed to the vote, we could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion for the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? We can close the poll and results. The motion carries with 202 yeses at 96%, eight nos at 4% and one abstain at 0%. So Article 17 passes. Article 18, recommended that the sum of 629,230 be appropriated for the purposes set forth in this article, that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer be authorized to issue with the approval of the select board bonds or secured notes the amount of 629,230, and that the town vote to accept grants under provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 90, in the amount of 629,230. The said reimbursements from the state 100% to be restored upon their receipt to the town treasurer. This was submitted by the select board, requires a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Mullen, you're recognized.
Peter Mullen, Precinct 2. I think all over town, there, if people look at the roads, they find that we're not able to maintain our roads. As I understand this article, we appropriate 629,000 and we get reimbursed that amount by the state government for the maintenance of roads. In Article 4, we appropriated a million dollars for roadway construction. I'm wondering if there's anyone that can give us any kind of an estimate as to what the true cost would be to try and maintain the roads we have in town and whether there's any plan or prospect that we'll ever be able to catch up and maintain the roads that we have.
Thank you. Mr. Denny, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator, Mike Denny, Town Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Each year, the Public Works Department asks for 3.6 million as a part of their capital requests. Obviously, the town doesn't have the wherewithal to bond that amount every year. Million dollars has been the consistent number since I got here. I think it would be north of 5 million if we tried to play catch-up. In 2018, the town hired a contractor, engineering firm to come in and do a pavement summary report. That is a pretty staggering report. It's online. I can direct people to it and promote it tomorrow online. We are thankful for Chapter 70, Chapter 90 money we get each year. That's based on the 200 million that the governor and the state legislator sends down. Milton's portion is usually, that's 600,000 crooked number. If you recall, when the governor was elected in 2015, he shared 300 million with the municipalities in Massachusetts. My first year here, I tried to petition, there's an algorithm that calculates that Chapter 90 money and with some affiliations with the State House and some transportation folks, we tried to change that algorithm. And the reason for that is Milton is very similar to a community like Wakefield when it comes to amount of roadways, population. The difference is the proximity to the capital city. People don't cut through Wakefield to get to Boston. So we had entertained a conversation with Mastard and those at the State House to try to change that algorithm to move that 600,000 dollar number up for the town. That didn't go far. They did put a committee together to talk about it, but Mr. Mullen, I echo your sentiments. The pavement summary report that was issued two years ago is still very viable. The Public Works Department uses it, and I will say that there's a metric system that goes with that. Any roadway that gets to what they score as about 50%, it deteriorates at a quicker pace. So I think the Public Works Department has been doing a very good job of identifying those streets. Unfortunately, we have utility contractors that come in shortly thereafter to work on some of their infrastructure and disturb those streets or maybe take a street off of the list that's due to be built this year. But again, it would probably be somewhere north of 5 million every year to try to catch up.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. I see Mr. Corcoran, your hand is raised. Mr. Corcoran, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Ned Corcoran, Precinct 3. In a prior life, I was Deputy Secretary of Transportation and Commonwealth, and it seems to me that the Chapter 90 allocation is going down relative to the overall state bonding budget. And I'm just wondering whether Mr. Denny can confirm that. I do applaud him for arguing on behalf of the town. We are a cut-through town. We're unlike many others. We're inside of 128, we're at the top of 95, 24 and 3. And I-93 cuts through East Milton, so we are absorbing an enormous amount of traffic, and that traffic is impacting the quality of our roadways in ways that are different than many other communities. But in two questions, one is, in general, is the Chapter 90 allocation from the state's overall bonded budget going down relative to over time? And two, is there, do you think it's possible that that approach that you've, that you discussed, Mr. Denny, would continue to have life and maybe some opportunity for success in the future if the town keeps pushing at the state for a reallocation of the, or reconsideration as to how that allocation occurs?
Mr. Denny, can you answer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mike Denny, Town Administrator. Mr. Corcoran, great questions, great observations. I'll answer the second one first. We will continue that dialogue with them. We have some great state electives that are working with us to fund projects in our town. The Route 28 corridor study and other Route 138 corridor study. Obviously, we have the federal earmarks that's working through East Milton Square right now, but our relationships with our state electives and their relationship at the State House and at Mastard is second to none. So I have a lot of faith in our senator and two representatives to make sure that the dollars come to Milton. I have not seen those dollars slip for Milton. It's always a 600 number. We did get another boost a couple of years ago where there was some money left over at the end of the year, and the governor decided to split 20 million, and we went from 620-something to 690,000. With respect to the, refresh my memory with the first piece of the question again?
Are the Chapter 90 allocations going down over time?
Okay, I think I answered them both, but very strong relationship with that. We submitted a complete streets policy three years ago, and today it was announced that we're getting another 120,000 from the state to redo the intersection of Reeddale, Canton, sorry, Reeddale, Brook and Central Ave. We recently installed the Hawk Signal on Reeddale Road by the hospital for pedestrian safety, and we had the first complete streets was the Lincoln Street project we had, which was all part of a massive undertaking from the Department of Public Works. So in addition to the Chapter 70, Chapter 90 money that we're receiving, we're always filing for grant opportunities and work, I think, very well with our state partners.
Thank you. I see no further hands, so we'll go to the vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. We could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. Unmute, thank you. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And close the poll, go to results, please. I declare a two-thirds vote as the article passes with 201 yeses at 99%, 3 nos at 1%, 0 abstentions. With that, we will proceed to Article 19, recommended that the sum of 596,700 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement or enhancement of the town's water system, including costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow 596,700 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 85 of the general laws, as amended or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds and notes that are under less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs and the amount borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied, and that the select board and hereby is authorized to accept and extend in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority or any other public or private funding source. This was submitted by the select board, requires a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? I see Ms. Wells, you're recognized?
Sorry, I'm taking my hand down, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then, Mr. McCurdy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Steve McCurdy, Precinct 7. I rise to address the matter of lead service connections. Milton's a town with considerable amount of old housing stock, and one would expect some of those to have lead service connections. The Public Works folks will know better than I, but I assume that to be the case. And assuming that it is the case, has the board considered adopting a policy whereby they will identify and replace lead service connections from the main to the meter, excuse me, as the town is doing any of its water main work? It's a public health problem that recently voted, I think it was 150 billion to address lead poisoning, and so there will be federal funds available for this, and I want to make sure that we're in the position to be able to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denny or Ms. Collins, for you?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Actually, Mr. Berkeley could answer this question.
Mr. Berkeley, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this article's borrowing does not include any specific lead service replacement program. There are separate funds available through the MWRA that made a significant loan program, zero interest, available specific to lead removal. The town's water system overall, we do not have very many, if any, known lead services in the street, so that's the town-owned portion of the water service, and we have very few privately owned lead services. There are some revisions to what's called the Lead and Copper Rule that will be coming up very shortly. We have some meetings set up through DEP and through the MWRA during the month of May to learn more about the revised regulations coming up, but essentially, the short answer is we have access to the MWRA loan money if we need it. As, to answer the question about revising or creating a policy for the town to create a mechanism to replace the private portion of a water service, so the part of the water service that's on a homeowner's land, that is something that we could discuss. There is nothing in place right now that specifically earmarks a way to do that, but it's fairly simple. There are many model communities, the city of Boston being one, where you can either offer financial assistance for the homeowner to do the work themselves or have the town's contractor complete that work on private property with appropriate waivers. So that's something we can certainly do the diligence on and put into place if that's the will.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further hands, so we'll proceed to the vote. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. If we could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. And unmute, please. On the phone, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And close the poll and display results, please. I declare a two-thirds vote with the yeses passing by 203 at 99%, the nos 2 at 1% and 0 abstentions. I see in my participant list that we could close that, pardon me. Ms. Rosemarin, Rosemarin, pardon me, you had a question, would like to address the body?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for the evening, please.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? A second would appear in the Q and A. We have a second. This motion to adjourn is debatable. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion to adjourn? I see Ms. Leveque, your hand is up. Nope, hands down. Mr. Furz, your hand is up. You're recognized?
Yeah, I just want to, hi there, everyone. I just want to point out, we have an awful lot of work to do, and if we adjourn at 10:15 tonight, we'll be here for probably two nights next week.
Mr. Furz, could you just identify your precinct as well?
Oh, certainly. Sorry about that. Brian Furz, Precinct 10.
Very good. Ms. Agostino, you're recognized?
And it is getting late. I missed the mute button. Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, what was your timeframe for this evening? I'd be interested to know also what your expectations might be looking over next week as well.
I typically go till 10:30. I think at the pace we're on, we'd probably knock off two more articles, maybe three tonight. Given some of the topics coming up on fire, on accessory dwelling unit, which is 43, there's some activity on Article 41, which is a planning board, I think we may be heading toward a late Thursday or a possible Monday. If that answers your question. Since I see no other hands being raised, we'll go to a vote. Motion to adjourn just requires a majority vote. If we could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. We could open up the phones. On the phones, all in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no?
Y'all.
You can close the phone. And we can close the poll, put up the results, please. The motion to adjourn fails with 91 yeses at 43%, 114 nos at 54% and 6 abstains at 3%. With that, we'll carry on to Article 20, recommended the sum of 320,000 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement or enhancement of the town's stormwater system, including costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow 320,000 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7.1 and 8.15 of the general laws as amended or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore. And that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general law, general laws, pardon me, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs and amount borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied, and that the select board be and hereby is authorized to accept and extend in addition to the foregoing appropriations, one or more grants or gifts from any other public or private funding source submitted by the select board. This requires a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to? Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing no hands, we'll proceed to the vote. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. Opposed, vote no. Abstaining, please abstain. Vote abstain, pardon me. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We can close the phones. And display the results, please. I declare a two-thirds vote with 199 yeses at 98%, three nos at 1%, and one abstain at 0%. Proceed to Article 21. Recommended that the sum of $1,150,000 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the capital needs of the town sewer system, including costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow $1,150,000 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8.5 of the General Laws as amended or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereunder. And that in accordance with Chapters 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds and notes thereunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount borrowed for each such product shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied. And that the select board be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the Mass Water Resources Authority or any other public or private funding source. This was submitted by the select board, requires a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing no hands, let's proceed to the vote. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. On the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We can mute. And display the results, please. I declare a two-thirds vote with 209 yes votes at 99%, two votes at 1%, and one abstain, pardon me, 299 votes at 99% yes, two no votes at 1%, and one abstain at 0%. With that, we will proceed to Article 23. To see what's, pardon me, Article 22, my mistake, 22. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY22. Total Board of Health, 316,133. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of 316,133 be raised from the tax levy submitted by the Board of Health. Requires a majority vote. Mr. McCurdy, you're recognized.
Steve McCurdy, Precinct 7. Not a question, Mr. Moderator, but a comment. A huge thank you to Mrs. Consella and her team for the, for the work that they've done for the town over this past COVID year and month. So thank you to them.
Thank you, Mr. McCurdy. Mr. O'Halloran, you're recognized.
Excuse me, Brian O'Halloran, Precinct 3. It appears that we added an additional assistant director because of the COVID response, which is absolutely appropriate. However, the COVID is a transient event. It's here this year, last year, but next year it's expected to be gone. Is this a recurring cost for the assistant director of health?
I'll find out. Ms. Consella, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You recognize, ma'am.
Yes, this is a recurring cost for an assistant health director.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, we will proceed to the vote. If we could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain and unmute the phones, please. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We can mute. And display the results, please. The motion carries with a majority, 193 yeses at 91%, 18 nos at 9%, zero abstentions at 0%. With that, we will proceed to Article 23. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY22. Total library, $1,604,119. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $1,604,119 be raised from the tax levy. This was submitted by the Library Board of Trustees. Anyone which requires a majority vote, recognize Mr. Mullin.
Peter Mullin, Precinct 2. I'm looking at page 47 in the warrant, in the comment. As I understand the comment, it says that the budget, the recommended appropriation falls short approximately $33,000 of the minimum spending on books and materials required to qualify for a $40,000 in state aid. As I understand that, it's basically saying if we appropriated an additional $33,000, we'd get $40,000 worth of state aid. That sounds to me like a good deal, and I'm wondering whether there's any way we can take advantage of that.
With that, I see Mr. Adam Check. Can you answer that question?
Will Adams, your library director. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Mr. Mullin, for the question. This refers to one of the requirements for all public libraries in the state, and it is a minimum requirement. We are confident we need to have this money expended by the end of fiscal '22. So if the money is not there at the beginning of fiscal '22, it's worrisome, but it's not the end of the game. We're confident that working with the town with some of the increased state and federal money in addition to some savings, hopefully garnered throughout the fiscal year at the library level, we will be able to make up this $33,000 shortfall, hopefully not having to go to a reserve fund transfer and then be eligible for the $45,000 to $46,000 that we are now estimating from the state.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mullin, very good. Mr. Mahalchuk, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Mahalchuk, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. I had the exact same question that Mr. Mullin had. It's been answered. I'm going to use my airtime to say thank you again, Will, for all your help on our bag project to fight world hunger. Good night, everybody.
Acknowledged. Mr. Walker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I'll make this very brief, but I would draw the body's attention to the comments under this recommendation. This is a department that got two positions approved by the Personnel Board since in fiscal '17 and fiscal '18. Since that time, the town has not been able to fund them. And I'm not telling many of you something you don't know, but there may be some people who don't know that the library shifted the way that it operated several times this year. It went from allowing access to not allowing access to digital. The library of things use went way up. The use of its digital projects went way up. And yet, we're still not able to give the library what it needs, even though it's a tremendous asset for the town and the children of the town. So I would just, I would just underscore that as we, as we look forward, we've got to find a way to fund these departments that are operating on possibly the leanest budget that they possibly can. And this has been the truth for the library for the last four or five fiscal years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Recognize Ms. Agostino.
Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct 9. And I just want to point out, this has been an ongoing issue for several years. And there was an offer by the library trustees that they would meet and review the trust funds. Has the subcommittee chair and the warrant committee years ago, we delved into this very issue that the trust funds could be used to assist in obtaining the the required minimum, and especially for books and other items. So I'm going to once again bring that to the attention of the library trustees. Sadly, one of my friends who was on the trustee who offered to meet and review this important issue, because it is important to get that $40,000 with a small 33,000ths of expenditures passed away. I'm sure we all miss Town Meeting Member Herb Voight. But I strongly recommend that we vote this the way it is and that we hopefully next year see that where the trust money is being added to the budget. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no other hands, we'll proceed to the vote. If we could put up the poll. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion for the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We can mute the phones. And display the results, please. The motion carries with a majority, 203 yes votes at 99%, two no votes at 1%, zero abstain votes at 0%. So ladies and gentlemen, we've hit our typical 10:30 witching hour. If there is an interest, just to let you know, we got the 24 that was approved by consent agenda. That's the cemeteries when we get the 25 that was approved by consent agenda. So schools would be the next order of business on Article 26 after we address Article 38, which we move to the date and time certain of the start of Thursday night's meeting. I see a motion from Mr. Matthews to move to adjourn. Is there a second in the Q and A? I see a second from Mr. Walsh. Could we put up the, this is debatable, is there any questions from the participants? I see none. If we can put up the poll. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please signify by saying aye. Pardon me, voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
We can mute. And display the results. The motion carries with 185 yes votes at 91%, 18 no votes at 9%, and no abstentions. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll reconvene Thursday, May 6, 7:30 p.m. via Zoom webinar.